Good evening, welcome to the March 6th Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Okay, so we just came out of executive session. Now we're in open session. I'm sorry, did you hear from Chris Morano today? Do you know when she was coming in? You told me she was coming in today. Did she indicate that to you?
She wasn't coming in, she gave her the letters.
She gave you the letters? Okay, that's fine, I have her down as coming in, so we'll... That's first on the agenda. Do you want to speak to that or pass the letters over or what it is you want to do?
We have it narrowed down to two people, um, to one person, but they, uh, this their second choice. They want to bring her on and try to keep her because she has some vacations. But they did pick someone and they picked, um, Ms. Joy from Halifax, and she wrote a She said she would send a letter regarding the other person on the status of position she was recommending her for.
Okay, do you want me to read this aloud for you too?
Yeah, please.
Okay, this is from the Plimpton Council on Aging. Dear Board of Selectmen, after screening over a dozen candidates and narrowing the search to three finalists for the position of Council on Aging Director, the COA Board has interviewed and reached a final decision on who they would like to recommend to you for the position vacated by the resignation of Christine Morano. Attached you will find the resume of their choice for you to review. The Board feels this person will be the best fit for the position to work with them at the monthly Board meetings and to carry out the goals of the Plimpton COA would like to see implemented in the future. Current Director, Chris Morano, has already submitted the annual report on the COA to Bridget, Bridget, sorry, Martins, for publication in the Town Report. She will meet with the Finance Committee on March 13th to review the proposed COA budget for 2018 and address any questions they may have. So the initial responsibilities of the new Director will be to create the monthly newsletter, get it printed and mailed, and to conduct the monthly business meetings. The biggest obstacle for her will be the state grant application, which is submitted every August for 2018. There are grants submitted in the past years unfilled to refer to while completing the documents. Chris will be available to answer any questions she may have. It is the hope of the Board and Director that you will agree with their choice since much time and decision has gone into this process. Thank you. The name of the person is Joy Marble. She lives in Halifax. She graduated from Silver Lake.
You probably know Joy, don't you?
Yes, I do. That's right.
Has an Associate's Degree from Massa-Soyet Community College and a Bachelor's Degree from Bridgewater State College. Has experience as a paralegal, legal secretary, and administrative supervisor in IS department, and a human resource supervisor. She owns property in Plimpton. She's been the Chair of the Halifax COA for 10 years. President for Generations, which is a nonprofit fundraiser for COA. Right at home caregiver in Rockland for over 10 years. Sounds pretty good to me.
Sounds very good.
So, motion to accept the Council on Aging's recommendation for the hiring of this person?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. And they're going to, the second person, is that as a paid position? And they're going to sort that out somehow with FinCom or?
It's going to be covered by grant money.
Okay.
Uh, that position. And I guess it's a nice juxtaposition because the, that person is a, kind of the perfect personality as an outreach person to the, you know, the different...
Great, nice.
Different piece in the Council on Aging, so she thought that was a good opportunity. And it's a grant they apply for every year, it's still there, and it doesn't, it doesn't appear like it's going away anytime soon, so they'll be able to cover it. Maybe in the future, we may have to, but it's not just a one-time grant, it's a grant that comes in every year.
So was, had voted at this meeting?
They had.
The Council on Aging? Was it voted that they were going to have this second person?
I believe so, yeah. Council on Aging voted.
We don't have that name, do we?
No, she gave it to me and I don't have it.
She was the second runner-up on it, and she said that she was going to submit a letter to Westmore State.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good.
But she was the second runner-up too.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have the 2016 Town Report. So departments, committees need to submit their annual report. Dale traditionally does it for us.
If everybody could submit their report no later than the 13th of April.
All right, so just repeat it. Please submit your report to Bree by April 13th.
Thirteenth.
And that gives you plenty of time. Do you need to bump it back and give them all a week to be late?
It's going to be in production, it's going to go to the printer.
On April 13th?
Yes.
You want these electronically?
You want it before then, then?
We can say the 13th, just, it's, we have a system that we came up with last year that Tara and I did, and it worked very well.
Okay.
And so part of the index, that's done already. So if we can submit their pages, the reports so far that have gotten have been good, they're great, so we'll put them in order. So we're just, the 13th will be great, please.
And you're going to send out a follow-up email to remind everyone?
My third reminder will go out tomorrow.
Wow, okay. Good. And how about the cover and anything else that we need to?
Nope, working on, we're working on the cover. Just around town.
Terrific. That takes care of?
Yes.
And report then?
In terms of the BLS report, if there, because I don't, I'm not sure I may see it differently, but any highlights that any of you think that should be included in there, just, just send me a quick email and I'll, you know, I'll...
How about lowlights?
You can do that too.
We're good, thank you. Okay, um, I put on preliminary review of the 2017 warrant articles, but I'm not sure that's, I didn't really mean a review, but just to make sure that we have all the things that we've talked about.
We have all of the ones that have been brought to my attention so far. There's some, just some minor changes. We're going to change the law, change the bylaw to create the revolving accounts under the Mass General Law. And I have a special article for the Police Department. And so far, that's the only really, well, the only ones I have.
So Halifax is going to be doing a non-binding warrant on the, yeah.
I don't really see the need for that. I don't know how you feel.
On the Silver Lake land sale?
Did you get my email today?
I saw, but I haven't had a chance to read it.
Kingston Boardhead voted not to buy the land.
Right. Yes. At this time.
At this time, and to pursue others, and that might be included in the later one, but they, at the last minute, they've decided it's, it's not going to appear on their warrant, so.
Right. I think the, um, the email, the other email that we got, which may have been included in that chain, thought that it might be a good idea for us to still do this, the non-binding warrant, just so that if it does come up again next September, whenever, our representation on the Silver Lake School Committee will know what the voters feel about this.
The issue I see is two. One, that, you know, as somebody said, I forget who responded to one of the emails saying basically if it comes up again, it may be a completely different land purchase with different parameters. And so you're, you're putting something on that may never appear. But two, if in fact they vote for it, to sell it. You know, I'm not sure, that's where, there's, we're not advocating one way or the other, but given that another piece of land comes along, we probably would be. Right now, we're advocating that we have the vote, but we've never talked about which way, but depending on...
Well, I think that's the point, is that, that this happened without the residents of the town having a voice, except for our representation on the Board. And maybe they, maybe they need more direction on how the residents would like them to vote.
Because if, even if they were to find another parcel in the Silver Lake land, it still would be selling Silver Lake land.
Probably.
And if it's not a parcel of Silver Lake land, then we're totally out of it. So, I mean, the question is, do the residents support selling Silver Lake District land related to any of the towns? Well, that just would be Kingston.
On the vote of just the school committee.
Yeah, on the vote of just the school committee.
Well, that's already, that's the legislation, so they have that right.
Right, they have that right.
This would be just to give our reps a feeling of what the residents want.
Right, if they want to support selling the land.
Yeah. I personally don't see that it hurts to do it. I don't know that it helps.
No, I'm not, you know, if you want to go ahead with it, fine.
Why don't you see about writing something up and then we'll talk about it when we get...
All right, well, you said Halifax is doing it.
Halifax has it on their special town meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
All right. What I'll do is I'll find out the language they use, it should, we should kind of mirror image whatever they, whatever they use, so.
That's fine.
I will check with Charlie and find out how it went and what the vote was.
Okay. So we do have a town clerk who has something that's not on the agenda, but, which came up this afternoon, and we're fitting it in under the, any other business that legally comes.
And the reason, it's, it's time-sensitive, so I received a resignation letter from Marilyn Brown on the Finance Committee. So that's the letter, and I've updated...
Thank you.
What now would be if you signed some of my paperwork. A third Finance Committee position, open for election. There's a Mass General Law that dictates that I need to have your letter to me saying that there's a vacancy that has to be filled 15 days before April 4th, which would be March 20th. I've done the letter, so if you can accept the resignation letter, and you can see the three positions now, there'll be two Finance Committee positions for three years and one position for two years. This is a letter that cites Mass General Law Chapter 41, Section 10, which is Procedure to Fill a Vacancy and Notice. And the last page is a page for your signatures notifying me, and it would satisfy the state statute in order for me to get in on the ballot this year. And I was just going to send an update to the town and on our website to let them know that the deadline is April 4th to sign that nomination paper, so we're not even a month away. So I would like to add that in for my update tomorrow.
Okay, so motion to sign this letter for Tara to do what she legally needs to do. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to accept the, with regret, the resignation of Marilyn Brown from our Finance Committee.
Oh, and if you didn't sign this as the updated version, you had signed one for me with the position for that includes the two-year position. It just goes in my file.
Someone second to your vote? Uh, second?
Yep.
Oh, we did, all right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
She will be missed.
She will be. Hopefully we can still continue to...
You want everyone to go to me?
Oh, and I suggested actually, it's, it's allowed to do it as a date certain in the, or in a, a date certain, so I suggested that she put in her resignation now so that I can get it on the ballot, but I suggested that it be May 19th, which is if our town meeting goes for two nights, it goes to the next day after the second night, so that she can do whatever she has to do for the town meeting, because she did say that she would help through this town meeting, but it's before the election date. So that's why the date is May 19th.
And I was actually going to do this at the end of the meeting, but since we're sort of on the subject, I just wanted to let people know that I will not be seeking reelection for the Board of Selectmen this year. So, thank you.
And we have that.
And you have that, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara.
Tara, can you pull papers already for the nomination papers?
Yes, oh yes. Everything's out, yep. Yep, we don't have, um, we don't have it in our bylaws when they're available, but they're available. We just have to do it pretty consistently, have them available. They've been available for a couple weeks.
Okay.
And I did post it, it's on our town website, but I will do it again tomorrow, including this position with an update and the timing.
Excellent. So all the positions are listed on the website that people could take out?
Yeah, updated, it doesn't include Marilyn's position, but I'll do that again.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, so...
No, she doesn't have to.
You're, you're all set on the warrants that you need to write out?
So far, yeah, I'm just starting to write the warrants now. I mean, all the standard articles will be there and then, and then a few new ones. I'll forward you the new ones to...
You'll send a draft around?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send a draft around. The only thing I ask is that, as in years past, when the draft goes around, try not to let it get out, because everybody thinks it's the absolute be-all and end-all.
Right.
And all of a sudden, the murmuring starts and we haven't even gotten to a, you know, to a certified warrant yet.
All right, good, thank you. So the decommissioning surety for Avita Bank, you said usually, usually we have a bond, this one is an escrow?
Usually our, yeah, usually we do a bond under the special permit for these things in case for some reason they abandon it and the town ends up taking it and has to decommission it. The builders on the Lake Street project didn't want to do it that way, for whatever reason. They wanted to do it as an escrow rather than a bond. I mean, in other words, a bond, they just sign the bond and it goes away and we know the bond is there when we need it. This is different in that it's escrow, they're actually depositing the money, Avita holds the money for whatever period of time, the 20-year lease. And the agreement went back and forth between their council and our council a couple of times till everybody got what they wanted on it, and our council recommended this is a good signature copy, so.
Okay, and where is that copy signing?
So we're at that. I didn't, I can't, is it, yeah, it's right here, isn't it?
So what's the amount?
Do you know the amount of?
Is it 20, 20,000, I think, 20, 25,000?
$24,068 and zero cents. Okay, so motion to sign this as recommended by our town coordinator and our town council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That has become language in there about this decommissioning, things that were suspended, but by way of thinking, the scrap alone, if we were to, you know, if we were to take the property for lack of taxes, I know it would be worth, you know, a lot of money, so I'm not sure it's really necessary in the long run, but this, the special permit calls for it. And again, this was, those were all components that were written in when Solder was just getting going, you know.
And it's just my signature on this, yeah? Seems. Now, is this with Borrego? Is that the company here?
No, this is, what's the name of it? Who's building the Lake Street one?
Blue Wave.
It was Blue Wave.
Well, it was Blue Wave, but they've assigned it to somebody since then.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where does this go? This, does it go to the?
Avita, is the bank, Avita Bank actually holds the escrow amount.
Okay.
And they hold on to the money, we have it, and then we would just have to present to them evidence that in fact, you know, the owners of the property are in default, we've taken it for taxes, and we're exercising our rights under the escrow agreement to take that amount of money back, to decommission the site.
So does the tax collector treasurer get a copy of this as well?
Treasurer, she says she'll get a copy of it. The accountant will have a signature copy and...
Okay, so next on the agenda is a fire EMS update. Do you want to do that, John?
Uh, sure. We talked a little about this in the executive session, but we presented a budget, the fire chief presented a budget to the Finance Committee. I think the thing that stands out is that since we've gone to advanced life systems or services, and we are starting to do part of Caver, and maybe potentially we've done one with Kingston, the revenue side of the EMS operation is increasing quite dramatically. And it looks like we're, last year, I think we had 183,000 in revenue, this year it looks like it'll be close to 250. We continue to go forward in pulling the numbers together to test different options, working with other towns, going to a private system. That will not happen by this town meeting, but we will have everything certainly by the time, a year from now. And so far, it looks good. I think we're bringing the cost down.
Good, thank you. Back to Bree.
Ambulance abatement, I might as well do that too. Barbara, town accountant, told me that I should get on the ambulance abatement committee, ordered me to get on the ambulance, so that we could address old receivables that need to be written off or at least understand where they are in terms of collection. I thought that was a committee that I had to be appointed, that's why I sent out a note.
Yes.
Tara has said that's not a committee that you need to be appointed, so I'm just going to work with Warren and Barbara.
Perfect, good, thank you.
From my experience, the Board gets to vote on that usually once a year to clear the books.
And it hasn't been done for a couple of years, so we need to do it.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, I had the land purchase on here as a tentative topic. I'm hoping that something would happen by now, but it has not. The PNS is still with the seller's attorney, and they were nudged last week, but that's it.
Don't you love lawyers?
Just love nudging. John, the technology grant application update, anything from last, other than last week?
Yeah, we were looking for the password, I sent a note off, copy and copied to Zach Blake, and he's given us a password.
Perfect.
So now I can get into the application, and with your help, we'll start writing.
Sure.
And I think you can only do this, it's one-shot deal, isn't it? You can't go back.
Right.
So you need to have all your...
We need to at least run off the application, so we understand.
Right, right, what they're asking. Absolutely. Okay, good, thank you. Public safety building update. Basically, we're looking pretty good. I think I told you last time that we had a, a rough final draft. We have a more final final. Nothing is actually ever final until you start building, I guess, but we're about as final as we can get at this point. We're going to get a finished drawing. We're in the process of preparing literature for mailing to the residents, we're gonna, the committee wants to come on the 20th to present to the Board of Selectmen. There's going to be public meetings, there'll be, you know, one at the library, probably another one here. But we seem to be pretty much on track for that. Because it was, it was discussed whether or not we needed a, an actual rendering drawing instead of, you know, something that you just pulled off the internet, and it would cost an additional $500 to Donovan Sweeney and the committee. We're still below budget, that's the 125,000 that the town meeting approved last year. So the committee voted for us to do that, and then we'll need Board of Selectmen's signature on this, obviously. So basically, that's where we are. We have a meeting this Wednesday at 6:00, just to work on tightening up the language for the literature. I don't know if we're going to have the rendering, there's a possibility that we will, and certainly we'll have it by the presentation to the Board of Selectmen on this morning.
Great, I look forward to it.
Yeah. I think you've made good progress.
Oh, thank you, finally.
Great, yes.
It's, it's been a long process, and I think we needed to go through every step to get to where we are, but we're there now.
Is your next meeting at 7:00 or do you see me at 6:00?
6:00 Wednesday, yes. Okay, the Ortho's flyover project.
I spoke with Mr. Ted Koval, WSP, last week, and indicated that someone would be interested in getting in on this, if it's at all possible. And he said it may be possible, there is some jockeying of the six original towns that were put in here, so, but that's not for us. So he's going to get back, he said he would contact some people, get back to us, because they don't know exactly how they cost it.
Didn't they need an answer this week? Didn't they need us to say yes or no by this week?
Well, no, because there's some, again, there's some question about whether the other six towns are participating or how they're participating, so they didn't even, so some of them aren't even signed on yet.
So if they don't sign on, does our price go up or does our price go down?
Well, that was my question to him. I said, how mu, I said, we need, you know, we need a number, and I don't have that number yet. He said he's working on it, he was supposed to get it back to me, I haven't seen it yet.
So Christine, are you familiar with this?
Yeah, I saw the emails.
Yeah. In addition, I did speak with the chief and police chief, Pat Dillon, and he said this would be very valuable for his department as well, for, you know, just for having the ability to have...
I kind of got a little bit of a different take from him, that this would be valuable, but the little he uses it, he's pretty happy with Google Earth, too. Bob Carleen indicated that he's also happy with Google Earth. We have this already, but it's 10 years old and he can't access it on his computer, so...
Yeah, well, it's, we don't have this. We have, we have Picnometry, which is, which is an older technology.
Okay, so if, if we do vote to go ahead with this, then we want to make sure that the people who are supposedly going to use it actually can use it. I think Deb Stewart said that this might make us eligible for more grants. Do you have any idea with that?
It could very well do, you know, it's, it's basically, it's a foundation, total foundation overlay of our assessors' maps, which then might make us eligible for some things that have to do with GIS and so on and so forth. I don't know if you've ever seen a GIS mapping system, but this is a sort of a stopgap. GIS places all of the buildings and outbuildings and everything on a parcel on the picture in the boundary line, so it's much, much, much more accurate for, you know, for zoning things, which I think that's, probably Bob hasn't really used it like that yet.
No, he hasn't. He, he indicated to me that he's really comfortable with Google Earth because it lets him look at previous years and...
Well, that's true, but, but Google Earth is generally, is generally, the aerials are generally short shot when everything is leafed out. This is done when nothing is leafed out, so that you get a much better picture of what's on the ground. And, and that tends to make all the difference in the world, because a lot of times on Google Earth, you can't actually even see some of the buildings or the building, you know.
Exactly.
I know my notes are like that.
So do you need a vote on this tonight?
Uh, no.
And we don't have a figure, so it's kind of hard to vote on.
Right, we don't have a figure, so, I mean, when, when he lets me know, I'll just forward you the email, but I get, whatever I get from him to the Board, then you can put it on the agenda for the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you're nay at that point.
Great, thank you.
Can you, just when you talk to him, make sure that on the flip side, that it's, we're not going to be locked into spending more money on this type of stuff because we've, we've done this? Because, you know, it'd be nice if there's grant money available, but then there's also, you know, what if we're required to maintain it or update it or do whatever? I just would want to make sure that there's no, you know, costs, ongoing costs.
Ongoing costs associated with it.
Right.
The initial thing is, is basically a snapshot in time, and it sits like that. If you wanted to do anything else, you could theoretically, you could do another whole flyover, or you could just fly over certain areas. And I would imagine in the future, the way things will work, and this'll, the Assessors' Department will have a drone in the air constantly just checking these things out for us on a regular basis, because that's just the way the world is working.
The Assessors of the police?
That is just the way the world is working.
You want to put a drone on that IT grant?
Now, if, just as an aside, read Tom, Thomas, Steve, I want to say Friedan, but it's not, his book, he's a...
Friedman?
Friedman, Friedman, New York Times columnist. Yeah, he wrote The Earth... Yeah, he wrote The Earth is Flat, but he just wrote, he just wrote another book, which is new, it just came out last year, 2016. And it's absolutely fascinating on what's happening in terms of technology, in terms of all of the technologies. He calls it the age of acceleration, and everything is accelerating far faster than anybody. I mean, even, and look around in the last 10 years, you know, everything's accelerating faster than anybody anticipated it. So, you know, nanotechnology and the discussion of Moore's Law, you know, that the processing power increases every 18 months, which they've stretched out to now two years. But that's also happening in terms of nanotechnology, robotics, and they're all sort of coming together, you know, they're coalescing, and the changes are just gonna be, don't blink.
Astonishing. All right. Thank you, then. Okay. Weekly report. I actually did not get in to sign any warrants yet. Bree prepared me a list, if I can find it here. Of course, I can't. I'm not gonna find it.
Let's do it next week.
All right. We'll just...
Do it next week.
Hmm?
Have your spiral binder.
I love my spiral notebook. Yes, thank you. All right. So we have $9,807 to KP law, which I will review and make sure it's going to the right departments, but that's probably...
It's 20% of the budget.
The auditors for $4,000, insurance for $220, Whitman Communications for $995. That was the new security system.
Oh, good.
Plimpton Express renewal, which I guess we have to choose...
One year?
One year, two years.
Two years, I think.
Yeah.
Forty dollars.
Yeah. We always get it. Yeah.
I didn't know it was 21.
Yeah. It's a little bit cheaper, isn't it, the two years?
Yeah.
Did you vote on that, or is that...
No, that's fine. Local computer store for $948, and Blue Tarp, which is Obashan, for $20. So I will sign those later. We are to Dale.
Silver Lake land appraisal is done.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have to pay for it, whether it's necessary or not.
And we have to pay for it, and of course, if they decide two years from now to buy that same piece of land, we'll probably have to do it again. It wasn't a tremendous cost, but I think it was, you know, I think it was, everybody did it for the right reasons at that particular point. I don't have a copy of it yet. Charlie's gonna forward me a copy, so we should, we should know about that.
So you don't know what it appraised at?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't. I would assume more. Real estate is beginning to really roll now on a lot of levels. Sales, I mean, I'm getting calls from people I haven't heard from in 10 years. Hey, can you do this? 'Cause I used to be in that business, appraisal work. Say, no, I can't, but, you know, here's somebody who can. So when I get that, again, I will forward, I hope he sends me a copy electronically. If not, I will just send you the abstract of it.
Good. Thank you.
I'll copy that. Email server still on.
It'll be part of the grant, and we'll see how that goes forward.
So we're not, yeah, we had already been working on this.
We had, but I think we've gone to a 50 server license.
Yeah.
With the idea of being able to put all boards and commissions' chairpersons on there.
Okay. Okay.
But if we don't get the grant, we still have to face, I think, doing that.
Yeah.
Which will, and again, I think that probably something that doesn't really come under capital, so we'll have to deal with that when it happens. Sale of surplus town car, the ad will go out this Friday, and...
It was in last week, yeah.
Was it in last week?
It was, it was in last week.
Oh, okay. She got it in early, then. So, all right. We got it in early, and...
Nobody's called, huh?
I think the deadline is the 10th. You haven't gotten it. Nobody's dropped off any bid, envelope yet, so...
Is it a sealed bid?
I mean, it's not.
So what do we do with it if it doesn't, if we don't get anyone who wants to spend $500 on a car?
I mean, if that's the case, then I suppose we call somebody who hauls cars away and say, take it away.
Well, you know, I had a car that rusted up, so I drove it down to, there's a place in Middleborough where they weigh it, and they pay you the scrap iron, so...
Yeah. We may have to do something like that.
Yeah. Right. We can shop around.
The chief is, Chief Bissari's the contact person for that, and he did say somebody had inquired about where to drop off a bid, so I assume we'll probably get, get a bid on it.
Good.
Soon. And, you know, then you can vote to solid. And that...
Dale, I'm sorry. What is the deadline for that?
The 10th. What's today? Yeah, the 10th.
Yeah, today's the 6th.
10th. I'm sorry. It was in last week. You're right.
Is that the only surplus vehicle that we have?
That's the only one that's come to my knowledge so far, that we, that we have, you know, the, you know, we have, I mean, occasionally, they, most of the vehicles, like in a police department, are traded in. This one, they didn't trade in. The last one, they didn't trade in, but, but most of them are just rolled over and traded in. And the components, police components, overhead, what they call a name for them, overhead lights, and so on and so forth, are, and radios and stuff are all transferred from one vehicle to another. So, I mean, we don't buy all of that stuff new again. Chief takes care of that. Beyond that, nothing that old in the highway department that I'm aware of, or in the fire department. I would suppose in a few years or a year, the second ambulance, which is now, God, I don't know how old, well, actually, the first ambulance, I don't know how old it is, that would be a surplus vehicle, and that would be sold at surplus, and then the new ambulance would replace the one we currently have, and that would become the number two, because you can't really only have one. They break, they need, they have to go for certifications, they need, so they have to have, you know, they have to be able to run two of them at the same, or manage two of them at the same time. And that's it for me at this point.
Okay. One question that I thought of this afternoon is, you were gonna look into the Elizabeth Dennett gift for the Historic Society?
Yeah, I did, and it's not as easy as it looks.
Did you get hold of Terry? Yeah, yeah. I know you had trouble when you went to find it, but you were going to, I think the last time we talked, you were gonna...
I'm trying to get the information. Somebody must have some information in town, because I guess she left money to the library, which I know about, and to the Historical Society, which I wasn't aware of.
Talk to Chris Moreno.
Yeah. But the, normally, that's done through a will, through a probate, and she doesn't have a probate.
Right. So when we're done, let me give you Terry Patterson's information. Terry Patterson was Honey Patterson's husband. Honey Patterson was Elizabeth Dennett's niece, who lived in town.
Okay. Somebody had to administer that.
And he will direct you, I'm sure.
When we were here, she, she had bank books with the money, right? I mean, she had bank books that she was showing, was the money. Now...
We had a statement.
Yeah. All we've got is a statement.
Statement, okay. So if they're, if, if that's a trust with the bank, then the bank would have those, that information. I just don't know what bank it is.
I think, Bree, don't you have those documents?
I have just the property...
The statements?
The statements.
Okay.
But it would indicate what bank it's from.
What bank it is, yeah.
Okay. Could you just, yeah, make a copy of that and give it to me, and I can inquire that way? Because it was obviously done out of probate, for whatever reason, because she's only recently deceased, and, and if there were any special instructions that go with that, it would be, the bank would be in charge of that.
When I talked to Chris, she didn't...
Yeah, Chris doesn't have anything.
...think that there was anything, and that was strictly for repairs.
Well, if there are no qualifications for how they can use the money, then that's fine, but we need to know that to...
This wasn't looking for bills, or...
A lot of times in those trusts, you know, you can only spend the interest, you can't spend the principal, and there's a whole lot of qualifications. But if, just give me that, and I'll peruse the bank and find out if there's any, at least if the bank knows any.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you. So now we're at correspondence, unless you have something else that you want to?
Yeah. Dale and I attended a meeting with the KAVR people. Mike Mankowski?
Millenowski.
Millenowski, sorry. Town manager, and Alan Dunham, board of selectmen. And we just talked through, the impetus, impetus for this was, what could we do as towns, sharing? I think it was, well, we spent, what, two or three hours?
Yeah. Free, anyway.
Yeah. It was a good discussion, wide-ranging. I certainly learned a lot. One of the things that Michael has is a forecasting tool and a capital planning tool. They do 10-year capital planning, and he was kind enough to share that. So it was on an Excel spreadsheet. I'll circulate it, and then Barbara will take a crack at it, and I'll probably help. We agreed we'd have a follow-up meeting, the idea being just one select person, so that it's not a meeting, you know, a breakfast meeting. It'd be Dale and Michael again, and one of you, and they were talking about having the chairman of their selectmen.
So they want a different select person than you?
Yes. And then after that, we'll...
Did they specify, they wanted a different one?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize.
And then after that, we'd probably do another meeting, and the other one would go.
They have five members, though.
Who would like breakfast?
I would, because I am going off, I would suggest that, that you do this, if you can.
Can you do a breakfast meeting?
I think it's worthwhile, and we can chat about, you know, I mean, it was, it was no agenda.
I mean, I could do it Saturday, but I can't do it during the week.
You know how hard it is to get bureaucrats to work on a Saturday?
I know. Well, you know how hard it is to get them to work Monday through Friday? This is Terry Patterson. Yeah. I would be more than willing to do that. I'm sure we can come up with something.
So Dale will all overhand it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could even meet, you know, at 5:00 or, you know, 5:30, something like that. I can come right from work, or whatever. It's convenient for them.
Yeah, that's a possibility. I'll, I'll check with them and see what happens, you know.
Okay.
We met at Percy's in Kingston, but there's no reason you couldn't do it in KAVR right there.
Right. I'll bring coffee. Tell them I'll do that.
They bought, by the way.
Could they come to Plymouth and take you out for lunch?
Yeah. Yeah, you could come to Plymouth, take me out for lunch.
Can you go for a three-hour lunch?
No. Talk fast.
Correspondence. This is a note from Bill Hayes, the Plimpton tree warden, relative to Eversource profiling trees for potential removal. I'll just read this. Mr. Alex Roach, an arborist, working with Eversource, is working in town profiling trees for potential removal. These are the trees with the blue ribbons you see around town. Mr. Roach is working under the direction of Eversource distribution arborist Kyle Barry. The trees are being evaluated for removal based on significant mechanical defects, decay, directly under electric wires, et cetera. Property owners or arbutas will be notified by the arborist of the potential tree removals. Eversource receives written permission for private property trees. Once trees have been secured, they will be painted with a blue dot. Bill goes on to say, "I will review any town trees with the arborist to make sure a determination of the tree's conditions." The utility is working with the town on many large hazardous trees. So the, separately, I, at the same time, had written him a note, 'cause I've got a tree. And he said, it wasn't, I thought they might be for pruning, and he said, "No, these are, this is for actual removal." Okay. However, the private property or the arbata will be contacted prior to any removal, so you'll have an opportunity to do that.
I was actually contacted, I think, roughly two months ago.
Were you?
Yeah. And, and they actually wrote down the wrong address for the tree. They, they put it on the corner of Center and Main, so it would've been the only tree in the front of the house. So I called them, trying to figure out what that was, and they had actually written down the wrong address. So if you get such a letter, you know, just check on the address and make sure that you're happy with what they're doing and get back to them to talk about it.
Yeah, and push back if you're not. I'm certainly, the tree they're talking about, I want to make sure that, in fact, it's diseased. If it isn't diseased, I don't want it coming down. And I think it was about a year or two ago, they were trimming trees and taking down ones, and same thing. And I called, sent a note, and just bypassed it.
So it's not, you know, it's, this is not something that...
It's not written in concrete, no.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. Halifax Express. This is Friday, March 3rd. Most of the information in here was all Halifax, except for, "Send Plimpton excise payments directly to treasurer-collector. Do not use the enclosed envelope." I think we talked about that. All the pictures are Halifax. The only other thing is the Town of Plimpton surplus vehicle auction. So this is in there, under planes, trains, and automobiles.
What year is it?
2005 Ford Crown Victoria, four-door, black, mileage 168,000, V8 engine, minimum bid $500.
Okay.
At the beginning, it says it's for a parts-only vehicle, because it has intake manifold issues.
Known issues, intake manifold, and ABS service light is on. And that's pretty much it.
All right.
Colleen, a while back, we, I think, had gotten an email about the fence viewer? Do you remember this?
Yes.
Whatever happened with that?
The, I, I think the person who instigated that thought that the neighbors would get together, have a cup of coffee, and get it settled. That didn't happen that way. Lawyers got involved, the fence was removed, it's, it's all over now.
Okay, so it's done. Okay.
Yeah. And we did appoint Bob Carleen as the fence viewer.
Fence viewer. Okay. Perfect.
It's kind of...
One other thing is the bylaw committee.
Yeah.
Might want to just update there. We had a meeting last week and two people from the Department of Revenue came. Mary McKinnon, who actually lives in Kingston, is the chairperson of the Finance Committee in Kingston, and Melinda Brody, I think her name was, senior project manager, shared with us what they've seen with other towns, and it was very, very informative, I think it-
Yeah, their background obviously is more in the finance bit, but they had some good resources for, for following up and good information for the committee.
Very nice.
And, you know, really, this, their involvement, it was all, started with us doing that DOR review.
Really, okay.
Was that three years ago now?
Yeah, I think three years ago. And Melinda Brody was actually the person who worked on it.
Oh, really? Oh, very neat.
Yeah, so it was good.
So from that, that thing, we did the call-in center and we did, you know-
Yeah, we've addressed most of the issues in that review.
Yeah.
Very nice.
One other, to go back into articles and possible bylaws, because, and you don't have to answer this, but I mean, just for food for thought, does the board want to consider a moratorium on the commercial sale of marijuana products in town until the state, until the state settles what they're going to do? Because at this point, no one knows. And, and so some towns are running into the, you know, people are running in with these big applications and they're doing the things, and there's no, there's no state guidance yet on that. So you can kind of put them off on that, but, you know, sometimes it's a lot cleaner if you have a moratorium on it. We did the moratorium for one year on medical marijuana. I mean, the other parts of the law, you can't, that's the law, and you can't change those. But I, just in terms of the retail sale and so on and so forth like that, because we may want to, you know, you may want to, the town may want to institute, you know, zones, certain zones, certain areas, or whatever, which you may be able to do based on however the legislature comes up with this law, which is supposed to come out sometime this year. Now, again, just food for thought.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it, and we might want to run it by the bylaw committee too. I'd be interested in some input.
Yeah, some towns are doing it, bigger towns than us, but I mean, because they're, they're going to have, I mean, and there's one town up my way where I live, where they're, they're kicking down the townhouse door to get in with all of these programs, and it's like, wait a second, we can't do it yet. So you have, and they say, "Well, in lieu of the fact that there is no guidance on it, we want to do it anyway." And, you know, you end up then that thing where you set a precedent and you're grandfathering something in, it may not be even legal whenever the legislature finds it.
I think, as you said, we did it with the medical, and it probably makes sense to do it.
I think so too.
So we don't-
All right. I'll, I'll check on some articles and, and email some articles out and you can discuss it.
I hate to get ahead of the state, you know, it just goes-
Exactly.
Raise issues.
Yeah, and, but you don't want to do it too early where you've wasted the year, where, you know, things aren't really happening, because you go, I think you can only do this once, and it's, what, for one year?
The moratorium.
Where, the moratorium, where, you know, maybe it would be better to do the moratorium next year rather than this year, if they're still working things out. I don't know, I mean, I just don't know.
The original, the original plan, the original timeline was that they were going to hold off until sometime this year, 2018. Instead, they would have, you know, they would have the law fine-tuned to 2018, as fine-tuned as Beacon Hill does with them. So that's the, that's where it stands at this point, whether they push it off again.
Could you just sort of check with whoever is in the State House, just to see, you know, what the latest thinking is?
Yeah.
Maybe an email to Betty to Benedict.
Question tomorrow for Tom Coulter. I'm sure they're well aware of what's going on.
I'm sure they're well aware too.
And, and decide whether, you know, whether we need to go from there or not. Because again, it's just completely uncharted territory, no one really knows how to deal with this thing one way or the other, and, and there, there's going to be a lot of growing pains through this, through this whole process. So if you can protect the town early on, probably better to do it than-
Absolutely. What is, what's going to happen with the wage and personnel bylaws? Are they going to stay under the jurisdiction of wage and personnel? Was there something that we needed to do as a warrant article to change that? I can't remember, we got an email from Tara.
The question was whether to include the wage and personnel bylaw in the general bylaws of the town. Because it's a separate, it's not included in the book at this particular point.
The people who are from the Department of Revenue suggested that was the way to go.
Okay.
And also special acts.
To keep it separate or included?
Included.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. No, I would, I would think we probably want to consider an article to include it in the bylaw, fairly simple, fairly simple, you know, article to just include it in the bylaw so it gets published along with the, with the, with the general bylaws, and then, you know.
So who would do that? Can you do that?
Uh, yeah, I'll work with the town clerk on it, just see how she wants to-
And special acts.
How she wants to put it in there.
Right, write the language so they can get special acts in there too.
There was a third thing that Tara wanted in too. I don't remember what it was, but certainly she'll tell you. There was a third thing that Tara had mentioned.
Yeah, okay.
I don't recall what it was. And that will keep all of the bylaw updates in one place.
In one place, everybody knows where to find it.
Oh, it just makes so much more sense, and having the special acts in there would be, oh, so nice.
The special acts just basically list the, you know, when the town votes to accept a certain-
Right.
That all needs to be compiled and put in there, and, and then you don't have to include, you could, but you don't have to include what the, the verbiage out of the general law that you just, just the-
Just the topic.
Just the chapter.
Right, well, then you've got a reference to know that we actually did it, yeah.
That you accepted, if the town has accepted.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay. Anything else then?
I do have an update. Caitlin Cole with the Darn movie.
Yes.
She got her license.
Yay.
Good.
Good, very good, that's great news.
And we have townhouse security.
Okay, you're on then.
Thanks. Whitman Communications came today, or, excuse me, last week, and the chief came today and delivered everybody their new panic button.
So every department, every office has one?
Every office has one. It is not on a clipboard like this. There are two offices that will have this, this meeting room and the small meeting room. This will be on the wall, it's on this clipboard, it's not to be removed. If you have an issue and you feel that you have to use it, just hold the button down five seconds, someone will come. If you feel as though you want to call 911, the chief has suggested you can do that also. But there'll be two clipboards, one in this office, one in this meeting room, one in the small meeting room. Chris is going to make arrangements because they're going to use that room for counseling aging, they're going to board, and all of the other offices have one. They are numbered, they are assigned to offices. Right now, there is still one in the hallway that can be used, and people know where that is, so send an email.
Okay.
Okay, our old system will be moved to the library eventually.
Good.
They're going to provide us with a fee on doing that, it's, I mean, all the equipment's there, it's just a matter of moving it.
Okay.
So right now, but this will be on the wall, but they are not to be removed from offices.
Okay, okay.
And don't push them to play and see if someone will come. Someone will come.
So since they're numbered, will they know exactly where the incident is?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So they'll go right where they need to be.
Yeah, in the panel at dispatch, when you press a button, they know exactly what office it comes from.
Perfect. Terrific.
Hopefully you don't have to use them.
Hopefully you don't, but it's nice to have it.
And then, since we're on the topic of townhouse security, let's just remind people again, if you have been given a key to the front door, make sure you lock it behind you when you're the only person in the townhouse.
And please bring your keys with you.
Bring your keys with you, because it happened last week that the door was left unlocked again.
They do have a key.
There is a key, yeah.
But it's, they have it in a lock box, and they have to get it from the chief and-
Oh, no, you, you, they don't carry it?
Police can access this building from their office at this point.
I think fire has to use the lock box.
Fire department has the lock box on the outside, they have a lock box on the outside of all of our buildings now in case they have to enter. But the-
No, I'm just thinking, if somebody forgot their key for some reason, which I believe is what happened, could you call the police and just say, "Hey, can you swing by and make sure the door's locked for us?"
It's not ideal, if they have a key, they should remember to remember.
Right, but it happens.
The sergeant doesn't have access to that key, so they had to call the chief, the chief had to then tell him what brought the key, so the chief came up to me about it, that's why.
Yeah, and then because-
And you can't lock this door from the inside.
Right, you've got to lock it from the outside, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we, can't we get that, so that would be the other alternative, just so it locks after you.
So if you could just try to remember your key, because it's not an easy process.
And then lights were left on and-
Oh, boy.
You know, we have a big electric bill, so we all need to be cognizant of that.
Make it bigger.
We're about to adjourn, do you have?
Just quickly, there is a grant open that we can apply for, and in conjunction with Kingston. I haven't had the response yet from the Kingston town planner, but she did confirm that-
This is for the flyover?
Um, this isn't for the flyover, because that's in conjunction with the other towns, but this would be anything else associated with that product. It's the Community Compact IT Grant, and they just opened it up again.
And we're filing under that.
Right.
So how would this work?
Okay, so you have extra credit, you know, I mean, extra, if you go within, go with another town, you're probably, are you going with another town for some type of software?
No, we weren't.
Okay. If, this is in conjunction with the flyover, and it might include the flyover, but I haven't spoken to the town planner yet.
Okay.
So they're putting in a grant, and so if the two of us, because the other towns already went in together for the February 1st deadline, so this is an extension of it, and I just found this out today, and I was waiting for the response. But when I spoke with Pat Dillon, he would like to use the software too. There have been some incidents that, when I, he came in and I showed him just what pictrometry does, he said he could really use that. And we could no longer use the Vision GIS, we could go with this People GIS that all the other towns are going with. And it's web-based, so Pat could use it, the police department could use it.
So if Kingston, are they going to submit for us, is that the way?
Well, we would go in, their planner is going to submit, so we would go in with them on, because we're doing the same, they're doing People GIS in the flyover. So that's what I have to speak with her tomorrow, to see, you know, exactly what she's doing, but, you know, been making other calls, and everybody else was already locked into the February 1st deadline. So this is a deadline that I just found on Thursday and, and started talking, and today went further with it, with her, and I contacted People GIS and asked him for a proposal. He's been giving them to all the towns. So it might be that it doesn't cost us anything, but I would know shortly.
Okay, I just want to make sure that-
The money's coming out of two different years, though.
Right.
This grant is, is for after July 1st.
Okay.
And the flyover is going to be done March and April this year.
Okay. Well, the grant you're applying for is for next year.
Right.
So we don't want two conflicting applications.
Right, I want to make sure we don't drop-
Well, it said you can have more than one per community, in, in all the language, it said that a community can apply for different types, they can apply for more than one, but we'd be piggybacking with another town, and that's given a little bit higher.
I'm fine if Kingston's filling it out for Kingston and Plimpton, that would be great.
Yeah, because they're already, apparently the planner's already working on it.
Yeah.
So, you know, my friend-
I'd just hate to find out after that, we should have filled out something, then we didn't do it, and it drops off.
Well, that's why I'm waiting for her to call me back.
Okay, great, yeah.
She is out today.
So let me know, Deb, because I'm also working on the technology grant for the townhouse and-
Okay, yeah. And it's, but where it would-
Sounds great.
Wrap up the, the flyover too, and then, you know, the other departments could use it online at night, where, right now, it resides in my, you know, my system.
Yeah.
So I think this would be-
So they could use it anytime, since it's up on the web.
Right, you know, the boards that, you know, com, com, planning, everybody could use it at night.
Makes a lot of sense.
Well, especially if it's paid for with a grant.
Is this for GIS as well? I mean, is this, so, we end up with one of those fancy GIS pages on, on, on the internet?
Yeah.
Oh, very handy, okay.
Yeah, and Vision, we have Vision GIS on the internet, and they haven't upgraded that in 15 years, so it's, and we, we're forced to do many, Wendy is an, and I help her, abutters list by hand now, and this would help us, so.
Okay.
Are there any ongoing costs, you know, maintenance costs?
That's what I'm waiting to hear tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
I just jumped on board when I, you know, received City and Town and it said that it's open. I'm like, okay, let's, let's do this.
Has to be filed by April 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
Or closes April 1st.
Right, so I'll, I'll wait, and the planner was already, you know, moving forward.
Great.
So it worked out nicely that we could jump on board.
Yeah, very nice.
Who's the person, the planner?
The town planner, um, I don't even have her name.
Okay.
I, I haven't spoken with her yet, so that's when it resonates.
And hires and sells them?
Yeah, but here's a very good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of certified abutters list, those things save an amazing amount of time. You, you, you know, you, basically, you highlight the parcel you need in the abutters list for, it puts in the 500-foot perimeter around it, flags every adjacent parcel, and prints out the labels for you. Other than that, it's, again, it's one of those technological things that ends up saving you money and personnel down the road.
A little inaccuracy, yeah.
I watched something similar to that, then, design a car. It's amazing, you know, the, the computer just creates it, makes the wind tunnel, I mean, it's, it's just-
Wow, pretty wild.
In fact, I was in a store somewhere in Plymouth, I don't know, maybe it was Best Buy, but they had, you could make your own plastic injection, you know how the-
3D printing.
The printing, 3D printing. And they had, you could pick the things you wanted, and it would just make it right there for you.
Wow.
3D printing will be in everybody's house, similar to a microwave oven very soon. And that's just, and in 10 years, you won't drive a car.
That's what they say?
You won't drive a car.
I won't be able to anywhere.
It will drive itself.
I'm okay with that.
Me too. I wish it had happened for the last six years I've been doing the commute.
It's in the back of the sleep.
I could have slept all the way down here.
You know, when you think about it, all sorts of things are going to drop out. The trucking industry is going to be disseminated with jobs, just blown away.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you start, the ramifications of this are-
It, it is truly mind-boggling, again, they have it in the library, the book.
Yeah.
They'll have the tape, they'll have the disc. When I'm done with mine, I'm going to donate mine to the library, but it's fascinating, read it, you'll, you'd really appreciate it, I mean, because with a techno back, with a technological background.
I am driving my car.
We do have a couple of other little things to, to finish up. It, it does turn out that the zoning enforcement officer's contract is also up, so we need to work on that, so, maybe see if we can get that on next week as well.
Absolutely.
We got our first payment from Rocky Harvest, the $13,500. I guess we need to figure out what account it goes into? I'm sorry.
Barbara will figure it out.
Well, this came from Barbara.
Is she asking?
We had given it to-
You had given it down to the building department, because originally it was, it was tied to an inspection fee. Now it's not tied to an inspection, so-
Probably ought to go into legal.
Yeah.
So where, do you have a suggestion for her to put this? Can I just give it to her and she's going to?
I'll talk to Barbara.
Yeah, John can talk to Barbara.
I write on those, on where?
Yeah, but they could just go in the general fund.
I mean, we were supposed to get checks in the original contract, so there must be something somewhere back then.
Well, that's, that's the difference, is because back then it was attached to an inspection.
It was inspection fee.
This is no longer attached to that. The, the check was taken down to Bob Carling, and-
That's what she had recommended, so this would come through.
Right. And he was talking to town council about something else, and mentioned that to her. She wanted to see a copy of it to make sure that it was the right amount, and timing was right and all that, and it's possible that she would have some recommendation of how we do this as well.
So let me take a shot at that.
Let me give that to her.
Well, there should be one more check coming, too, for the $20,000.
Twenty thousand, and I did, actually, when he told me that, I followed up with town council, asking about the timing on that, that's, they have 20 days from-
March 1st?
Some date, no, it was from, I don't know if it's when we signed the settlement agreement, when the court got the settlement agreement, or what, so-
It's soon.
It's, it's soon, but I'm not sure when, so I did ask her about that.
Okay.
We'll have that information.
Yes, good.
All right, we do have some minutes. We have an executive session minutes from last week that I think are fine, so motion to approve the executive session minutes from February 27th as written.
Second. I wrote it.
On favor.
I'll abstain, because I wasn't here.
And one exception, so.
Oh.
Two in favor and one exception. All right, we've got minutes from, I don't know the date on these, I think the dog hearing came first, so did you all get a chance to look at the? There was a question about whether or not we actually remembered to close the hearing. I don't remember these things.
I don't think we did, and I wouldn't, it was the intent to close the hearing, I don't think it's going to have any impact on anything.
Do we want to add a sentence that, you know?
No vote was taken, or what?
No, we did vote.
Yeah, we voted to-
That the intent was to close the hearing, and, sorry, we forgot.
Yeah, it was a procedural error.
The adjournments de facto closing of the hearing.
All right, so then-
Right.
That sounds good.
Yeah, so then motion to accept the, the dog hearing minutes as-
amended?
No, we're not making anything.
We're not changing anything.
We're just-
Do we have a date on it?
Second.
Pardon? I printed these off on my Mac, and it prints weirdness.
Yeah, 2/13.
It prints. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes that Dale prepared for February 16th, and I actually do have some questions about this. The first is, under Rocky Harvest, you have two motions to authorize time with Town Council, and I don't actually remember what that was about. I did it, but I don't remember it.
Oh, this was the 16th, to authorize time with Town Council.
I'm not sure it was, had to do with Rocky Harvest.
Yeah, that's-
I just put it in there because I have it, I had it in my notes, that there was a motion for time with Town Council, and of course, I failed to put down a subject.
Yeah, and I, I started looking at the, um-
What else did we do that night?
Recording of it and I got in it. We, we signed the Carver Urban Renewal Conflict of Interest letter for KMP.
I just don't know what else you would have needed to contact Council about.
No, and I looked through my notes, and I couldn't find it, so. We can leave it, or, or take it out, I don't think it matters, really, but.
Well, it was on cable, right?
I didn't, I didn't watch the whole thing. I ran out of time, so. So basically, move Rocky Harvest down to where I read the press release.
Okay.
This is related to the Carver Urban Renewal Project. So motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, these are executive session, right?
No.
Okay, those are executive session, okay.
The only executive session was the one we just did up there.
Can we release those?
For the Rocky Harvest thing?
No, the executive session minutes that you just approved, can we release those
Well, it was about the contractual-
Let's wait until we-
Yeah, probably not, then.
These current contracts. Okay, so then we have minutes from February 27th, which we prepared. I did have a couple amendments in the first paragraph. Sorry, it's taking me a minute here to find it. So, in the past, in other, I'd like to add, in other regional school districts, land owned by regional school districts, required the vote of the legally elected school committee. And then the sentence goes on to say Senator Brad, Brady fired, excuse me, filed new legislation for future votes of town, towns, elected officials be required for the, I just think that's all kind of rough to read. So I'd like it rewritten to say Senator Brady has filed new legislation which would require votes by elected town officials, parentheses, board of selectmen, of district member towns for the sale of land owned by regional school districts.
Ooh, I like that, that's nice.
Okay, so just one rewrite.
When did he file that?
When he was here last week, he said it's been filed.
Good.
It doesn't have a bill number or anything like that yet. And on the second page, it says a draft of the description of the town administrator position was received and will be reviewed by the Collins Group. Is that, I, I don't quite remember that this is going to be reviewed by the Collins Group.
Well, I don't think so.
What did the Collins Group give you?
No, we, we made one from looking at other towns.
Yeah, I think that what this may be, we talked about hiring the Collins Group to-
Yes, to go forward.
As consultants with this process. So I don't know how you want to, you, you were not there, and we were there. Do you want to think of how to rewrite that, or just take it out?
Right now? Let me bring it back.
Okay, so we won't vote on this one tonight.
I'll bring it back.
All right, that's-
We're not picking.
We won't vote on that tonight. So the next meeting is next week, the 13th. We will have executive sessions prior to our meeting. We have actually three different contracts, at least, I think, to discuss, so we may start at 6:30 for our open session.
Sounds good.
That, that makes sense.
Public Safety Building is this week, the Culver Lake School Committee meeting is also this week, but it's kind of moot since we're not-
So you want your 3/13 meeting, so you can put a second to start at 6:30?
Open session. The open session will start at 6:30, yes, thank you.
I need to run it.
Yep. Oh, and that was something about the Public Safety Building meeting this past week. We had, I guess, maybe a little confusion, a little breakdown of communication, and that meeting started at 7:00, and perhaps Area 58 showed up at 6:00, so it didn't get recorded. So then motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night. Thank you all for watching.